Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 5th meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Would you please stand with us and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may we have a motion to move out of executive session, please?
So move.
Thank you, all in favor? Motion carries. You've had an opportunity to take a look at tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, may we have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So move.
Thank you. Seconded. All in favor? Okay, agenda holds as read. I'm unaware of any visitor's speaking time, but will ask anyways. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who'd like to address the board? No, Dave's not raising his hand. All right, thank you. Lorenzo and Josh, welcome. Who would like to go first tonight? Okay, Lorenzo.
Good evening, Board members. Students and faculty are happy to be back after Thanksgiving break, but everyone is very excited for the holiday season and the first two-week break we have had since I was in kindergarten. Seniors are finalizing their college applications, and many are starting to write their scholarship applications. Our seniors are very busy, but also very stressed. On November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, Thomas put on the play Born Yesterday. It was a very ambitious and a well-done performance that Thomas director, Mr. Stetzel, put together, and we are very proud of the show's success. In other theatrical news, auditions were held for Anything Goes!, the musical, on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. The actors and directors are very excited for this year's musical, which will be performed at the end of March. Last Tuesday, Thomas said goodbye to one of our most-recognized secretaries in the main office, Mrs. Cernas. Many of you probably know her as the voice answering the phone when you call Thomas, and we will miss her very much. Mrs. Karen Nugent has replaced her, and we are very happy she is working with us. Last week, our AP Psychology students participated in a conference at the Strong Museum of Play with students from other local schools. They explored cognitive and developmental psychology theory during both a lecture given by Nazareth College and by interacting with the exhibits and observing children. The museum acted as a laboratory environment as they explored how play impacts child development, but after their research was completed, they were allowed to play in the museum like the kids. Thomas's own Elizabeth Meyer wanted to give back in her own way this holiday season. She recorded a Christmas CD, and she is going to sell it, donating all the proceeds to Strong Children's Hospital. Elizabeth wanted to give back to Strong ever since her cousin spent most of his first year there due to seizures. She will be selling the CDs at Cold Stone Creamery in the Target Plaza this Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00. We are so impressed that Elizabeth has put this together. Winter sports seasons have commenced, and some of our teams have already competed. The boys' basketball team faced Churchville Chalet yesterday, and unfortunately, they lost, but the girls' team faced Canada Guin Tuesday and came away with a victory. We look forward to seeing all other Titan teams play this season. The Titan family hopes you all have a safe and wonderful holiday season and New Year. Are there any questions I can answer for the board at this time?
Thank you, Lorenzo. Josh, tell us about Schrader.
Good evening, Board members, and thank you again for having me back here again tonight. To further connect Schrader students with their school, our counseling department has created a Twitter account for families and students on important events and deadlines. We invite you to follow our counselors at, the at symbol, Schrader CCC. On Tuesday, our math league came in first place at their competition at Newark High School. We had 29 participants, with senior Zach Lyons and junior Kyle Zhao receiving perfect scores. We congratulate the team and their two advisors on their victory. Although the fall sports season has ended, this past week, seven of our girls' soccer players were recognized for all county. Seniors Kendall Sorala, Brandi O'Brien, Samantha Chula, Emma Murky, Alex Lee, and Megan Herbst, along with freshman Matty Lowe, were all named. In addition, five of our girls' field hockey players were named to all county as well. Seniors Alyssa Scott, Elizabeth Pizzo, and Ellison Johnstone, junior Jessica Belt, and sophomore Lindsay Scott. On Friday, December 13th, at 7:00 PM, the Schrader Webster Show Choir, the Schrader and Thomas Combined Singing Group, will be holding its talent showcase in the Schrader Auditorium. Tickets are $5.00 at the door, and all proceeds will go towards helping the group compete in a show choir competition in New York City. Artwork from our art teachers will be on sale, along with gift baskets will be auctioned off during intermission. And on Saturday, December 28th, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, all show choir alumni are invited to partake in a cabaret-style concert. We invite you to come out to both events to see some of our Webster talent shine. And speaking of talent, these past two weeks have been very busy for some of our alumni. Class of 2002 graduate Tommy Bechtold was recently cast as the video game-addicted, red-headed college roommate of Axel Heck on ABC's hit sitcom The Middle on Wednesday nights at 8:00 PM. Class of 2010 graduate Kate Gurno appeared on the Country Music Awards Christmas special this past Monday on ABC with Jake Owens, singing, dancing, and fiddling onstage. Last year, class of 2012 graduate Daniel Peckham, a current sophomore at Morrisville State College, was named Rookie of the Year in the Northern Eastern Athletic Conference for college men's soccer. This year, class of 2013 graduate Alan Peckham was named Rookie of the Year as well, just one year after his brother, also at Morrisville State College. All faculty and students at Schrader are proud to hear of all the wonderful accomplishments of our graduates. Thank you again for allowing me to share the happenings of Schrader with you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Lorenzo. Thank you, Josh. Lisa, anything from the WT8?
Tonight's highlight is on Jody DeHovoluk. She is an English teacher from Thomas, and she is going to share her thoughts and feelings on the Common Core, having recently attended a Common Core conference.
I'm the lead English teacher at Webster-Thomas High School in Webster, New York.
And what are you doing here today?
I'm here for the Network Team Institute to learn about the rollout of the ninth-grade modules and learn more about the new testing and the way that the Common Core is being rolled out to the teachers of New York State.
And how's that going in your district?
I think it's going well in my district. We're a high-performing district, so we're working to adapt the modules in a way that makes sense for us. I think the Common Core is very strong, and it's great in a way that teachers can understand what to do with it. So we've been working with the Common Core in our district for probably three years, working to align our curriculum to the Common Core, right from the time that they rolled it out. And we're working with what's coming out now with the modules to see what's new that we can use to inform our instruction, to better meet the needs of our kids.
How did parents react to you rolling out the Common Core?
I think overall, we've had a positive reaction to the Common Core. I have presented a couple times over the past couple of years at board meetings to talk to the community and the board about what we're doing in our English classes that is Common Core and new. I think we're trying to get the message across to the community that, yes, we're Webster, and we're Webster proud, that's kind of our hashtag in Webster, but there's always room for improvement, and that's what we want for our kids.
And you believe Common Core is an improvement in the past three years?
I do. I think for us, we use PLCs, professional learning communities, and so we're working to use those as a way to have more conversations among teachers to better our instruction. And so that push from the Common Core, I think, is what has worked in Webster for us.
And how do you think the conference here is going? I mean, are you learning?
I'm learning almost too much. There's a lot coming our way. So I have spent yesterday and today thinking about what's right for Webster. What direction are we going to go in? How are we going to use these modules? How are we going to adapt these modules? There's a lot that needs to be done, and there's a lot, as a leader, I need to figure out what's the best way to get the message across to our teachers so that it's not overwhelming and so that it's doable, which I think it is. I've had a lot of talks with my administrators today and yesterday about the time factor and the fact that teachers need time to let all of this sink in so that we can put it into our instruction.
Any questions? Happy holidays, Board, and I'll see you next year.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. I don't see a PTSA representative here tonight. Am I correct? Okay, then we will move on. The other day, I received a letter, and I have been asked to read this letter to the board and the community. Dear Board President, after much thought, I have decided that I must resign my position on the Webster Central School District Board of Education effective December 20th, 2013, or when the board has identified a candidate to fill my position, whichever is first. It has become increasingly difficult for me to dedicate the time that I believe the position as board member requires, and more importantly, deserves, and I anticipate that over the next several months, the conflicts will increase. I am so proud to have had the opportunity to work with such an incredible and dedicated team over the years, and of the work that the board and the administrative team has accomplished on behalf of Webster students. Thank you for your leadership and continuing focus on the district's core belief. Sincerely, Janine Cushman. I am sorry to have gotten this letter, Janine, but I will accept it, and I have asked Sue, since she's one of your close friends, to say a few words on behalf of the board acknowledging your years of service.
Well, this is probably your last public board meeting.
Yep.
And we'd like to thank you for your 12 very dedicated years of service. You've been an excellent board member.
Thank you.
Your decisions and your, our conversations and your decisions have been always very thoughtful. They've been always focused on students. You never wavered, never wavered in how important all of our decisions were for students. You are our wordsmither. I don't know what we're going to do at our goal-setting meeting and our evaluation meetings without you to help us get our words to be succinct and really reflect our thoughts. So we're going to really miss you there.
Mike's pretty good. Mike does a good job.
Not as good as you.
[laughing]
No, no. Anyway, Janine, we really do appreciate your service, and we have something for you, a small token of our appreciation.
Oh, that's very sweet. Thank you very much.
Couple of hand-painted Webster mugs. So hopefully, when you drink coffee, your thoughts about us will be fond.
Yep.
Hopefully, you'll have good memories of us.
I will.
So thank you very much for your 12 years of service. And can we have a round of applause for Janine? [applause] Thank you.
Do we run it out afterwards for her? Do we run it out afterwards? We'll talk later. Well, this is a bittersweet moment, Janine. Will we have to proceed? More and more studies show that if students have a positive experience in their first year of middle school, and likewise, their first year of high school, the chances for success increase dramatically. Now, our middle school and high school transition programs provide that structure for our sixth graders and for our freshmen to receive the support and guidance from older students who have been through the challenges that middle school and high school provide. Tonight, we'll be learning more about our transition programs, as well as celebrating some of their recent successes and activities. So I believe, Janine, are you going to introduce the entire group, or is it going to be Jeremy? Or, okay, come on up.
[inaudible] Oops. Thank you.
Pass this out to the actual board, because there might be doors to them.
We were selected by the Boomerang Project to host the 2013 LINK Student Conference, and I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about that, about what that was and what it entailed. We had 11 schools, 10 schools join us, 280 LINK leaders, 25 LINK coordinators, and from all over the New York region, came and spent a day here in Webster. This LINK Student Conference was a great way for LINK leaders to see that they're part of something bigger, and that they're part of a larger community that's focused on developing leaders and improving school cultures. At our conference, the Boomerang Project director guided us through a series of activities, allowed everyone to connect with others from different schools, and shared ideas to help work, to help leaders work with their LINK crew freshmen when they got back to their district. We heard a keynote speaker, excuse me, that inspired us to lead our freshmen in even more dynamic ways. The adult coordinators, we had 25 of them from the different school districts, met separate from the LINK crew leaders, and we shared and gathered ideas to capitalize on each other's successes. So this really is a celebration. We had a wonderful day, and to capitalize on that, we have been asked to host the next Student LINK Conference coming up, actually, in 2014. So we're thrilled. And you're going to learn a little bit more about LINK and WEB in their formal presentation in just a moment.
Can you give us an overview of what LINK is for people who may be listening who aren't sure what LINK and WEB might be?
Yes. LINK and WEB, our student mentoring transition programs, where incoming sixth graders and incoming freshmen are paired with older students that act as their leaders and mentors, not only for Orientation Day, that first introduction into their new school, but throughout the year. There are meaningful activities that take place, so kids are automatically connected to the school, and you'll learn more about that in a moment. Okay?
Thank you.
Who's next?
Well, for the celebrations of excellence, that's my understanding that we did, and then we move into the presentation. Is that correct?
[inaudible] Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that. The fact that we've asked to host another conference, that we hosted a conference and we're...
Those two things are the celebrations. Yes.
Round of applause.
Yay! [applause]
Move on now into the presentation.
Into the presentation.
Okay, then we're going to have to invite some other people up.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Mary Ellen? Yep. Jeremy, you want to switch over?
I'm a P. [inaudible]
All right, how about if we do quick introductions first? Janine Sanger?
And I'm Jeremy McBride, Assistant Principal at Webster-Schrader, and I've also been involved with the LINK crew now for three years, and I, at our building, I am the voice of what we call "floor work," which is the beginning introduction and the exercises that we do as a whole group. So I work with the students in their whole group before they then, as you'll learn a little bit, go into smaller group sessions in our classrooms with the students to do some mentor work.
Mary Ellen Petz, I teach sixth grade here at Spry. I'm a WEB leader, one of three, and I've been with the program from it first started three years ago. I would be a director, not the floor leader. Jay Jugovic would be my floor leader, and the other director would be Jamie Anderson. So we are the directors and the producers. Our floor leader would be Jay Jugovic.
Well, I'm John Toomey, just eighth grade here at Blue House, and just a WEB leader.
Not just a WEB leader.
You are a WEB leader.
I'm Peyton Bear. I'm a junior at Webster-Thomas, and I am a LINK leader, and I went through LINK when I was a freshman.
I'm Andrew Sterpy. I'm also a LINK leader, but I'm at Schrader, and I'm a junior, and I went through the LINK program as a freshman myself.
My name is Cheryl Navarro, and I'm a phys ed teacher at Webster-Thomas, as well as one of the LINK coordinators at Thomas.
I'm Emily Miller. I'm a social studies teacher at Thomas, as well as one of the LINK coordinators with Cheryl.
As you know, our goal in Webster is to develop a climate and culture where students feel safe and welcome in our schools and are able to successfully engage in learning. LINK, Crew, and WEB are part of the work that we do to achieve this very important culture. Our efforts with LINK, Crew, and WEB have empowered our secondary schools to cultivate student leadership, create a sense of belonging, and build a strong sense of community. Thanks. We continually look at our K-12 system to find opportunities to develop college career and community readiness. Transitional times within our schools provide us opportunity to teach skills that will promote these areas of readiness. We know that transition to middle school and high school can be stressful times for students and parents. Three years ago, we implemented WEB and LINK crew programs here in Webster in an effort to ease the stress related to that transition time and to engage students from the moment they walk into their new school. As you know, employers and colleges are placing more emphasis on these community readiness skills, such as leadership, communication, and motivation. In fact, according to eHow.com, very reliable source, leadership is now the hottest buzzword in college admissions.
The objectives of LINK Crew look at empowering the older students to be mentors to younger students. In the past, for what we called freshman orientation, students often were in an auditorium setting. They sat in the seats. One of their administrators would then speak to them, go through the rules, go through the expectations, talk about the schedules, and talk about the setup of high school. Oftentimes, we noticed the students weren't as engaged as we would have liked them to have been. Now, what we're seeing is a stark difference to that. The students are very engaged, they're active, they are doing activities when they are in what we call our floor work exercises, they are in the bleachers in the gymnasium, and they're following along with one of the leaders to actually do some exercises with each other and individually. Some of the things to the kids at first look almost as a childish type of activity, but there's a lot of studies that LINK, Crew, and the Boomerang Project have done to link the activities to their childhood, bringing them forward into where they are now, and showing that that really will link some past experience with where they're moving ahead to. The students are exposed, as it says, to a variety of positive situations. They interact with each other, and they interact with the seniors and juniors in the high school in particular, and with the eighth graders in the middle school. They are going to, when they're in the floor exercise in particular, the kids are interspersed amongst the students in the bleachers so that they're doing the activities along with them, and the freshmen are seeing that they're not just doing this as freshmen, they're doing it with the upperclassmen or with the upper-end students, the age students in the eighth grade. For the leaders to become leaders in WEB or in LINK, they have had 10 hours of training, which, interestingly, the adults have also had a very similar training, which I'll talk about the end of this slide. The students go through training the days before orientation. Usually, it's two days prior to orientation. We make sure that we do that right away so that it's not done early in summer or middle of summer, and then orientation is a couple weeks later. It's done right in conjunction with the same, with the days before the orientation. The students learn a series of activities with each other that they will actually then be conducting and performing with the students in smaller classrooms in settings of about eight students each. So we have two LINK leaders. We try to set up so that there are maybe a male and a female LINK leader in each group, and then we randomly allow students to be selected to go into the groups of the rooms. About eight students per group, and the LINK leaders and the WEB leaders actually conduct exercises with them that get them doing team-building exercises. And those team-building exercises build confidence and help build their self-esteem towards moving into high school. What we notice, then, is the students come back to us. They do a tour of the building, they do usually theme-based tours, and each of the WEB leaders and LINK leaders set up small, theme-based, we had, for instance, one group set up a Mission Impossible theme where the kids literally looked like they were sneaking around the building. And one of the kids, I think, was even playing the Mission Impossible theme on his phone as they went through. We had one group set up a Hawaiian theme. They all, they brought in Hawaiian shirts for their kids, walked around the building, and instead of doing a very traditional tour, it was more real animated and more interactive for the tour. And the kids, we got to interact with them and watch them doing that. They really did a nice job of creating a positive atmosphere around that tour. They come back, then, for an ending floor exercise, and in that, we get to see the kids interacting much differently with the upperclassmen or with the older students at the middle school than they did previously. Now, they've actually found what we would say is a friend, and they know that the day coming into school, the first day, there's going to be kids in these red shirts in our building and in Thomas this year in particular, if they saw those red shirts, they knew they had someone who they were going to be able to go up to and say, "I'm lost, I don't know where to go." Because they aren't always as comfortable coming up to the adults, even though we think they are. Were the adults in the building, of course, they'd be comfortable. They aren't always. We notice in the hallways that first day, they're walking up to the WEB leaders, or to the WEB and LINK leaders, and asking them questions. So we're very excited with that. For the adults in this training, so how do we train the kids? We actually went to trainings through the Boomerang Project, where we went, spent three intensive days training to do the program, and we started with the first day actually going through the program as though we were freshmen ourselves, or as sixth graders ourselves. Very intensive training. I don't think we even knew what to expect when we got there, because they start immediately and put you right into it, just like a freshman would, walking deers-in-the-headlights, look into, in our case, the gymnasium in our building. We were the same way, and those three days, we spent going through an orientation program and then intensively training on each small aspect of each activity so that we could all train the students on how to do those.
This year, at both the middle schools, both at Spry and at Willink, we had a wonderful turnout. We had over 100 students at both schools, eighth graders, apply to be WEB leaders. We felt this was a direct reflection on their own experience as sixth graders. Our current WEB leaders were the first group to actually participate in the WEB orientation as sixth graders. WEB stands for Where Everyone Belongs. WEB is a middle school transition program, similar to the LINK as the high school program, that welcomes sixth graders and makes them feel more comfortable and at home during their first year at middle school. WEB leaders are trained, just like the LINK leaders, as positive role models, mentors, and leaders as they guide the sixth graders to be sixth vessel and make a connection throughout their middle school years. Through this program, schools have reported nationally that they've reduced bullying, discipline issues, as well as increased safety for the whole school. On Orientation Day, run by the WEB leaders, sets the stage for a successful year. Activities throughout the year, we have done activities in small groups, big groups, Bingo Day, Fun Night. The WEB leaders are able to reconnect with their sixth graders and still have that connection throughout the school year. As you had met, John is a current WEB leader who also had the chance to experience WEB as a sixth grader, and John is just one of the many wonderful examples of how important and successful this program is for not only the sixth graders who are coming in, but for the eighth graders who actually go through this experience. So, John, would you share with us your experiences, not only as a sixth grader through the program, but as a current WEB leader?
Well, as a sixth grader, I know what it's like to be kind of alone or like lost, and understanding how you could just walk up to a wonderful person in a pink shirt, well, at the time, I believe it was...
Yellow.
Yellow. But just the great system that they put you through to like, teach you how to be a great leader, to make you like, just make friends and be welcomed, feel like Spry's a home to you, and, well, through the process, I felt the leader characteristics like happened to me. And as a WEB leader on the first day of school, I just love to see how it just brought a smile to my face to help out all the sixth graders, to just make them laugh, make them feel home, because I understand what it's like to be them. I understand how it was being so nerf, oh, sorry, so nervous, so scared, just terrified of the school, and then feeling welcomed here. And that's just the greatest thing for me, really.
Thank you. Thanks, John. We've started... We've started to identify and collect data to measure the effectiveness of Web and Link and we just wanted to share some powerful testimonials with you as well. We use Web leaders on the morning show regularly. We utilize, you'll see that we utilize our Web and Link leaders in positions of leadership and mentoring throughout the school, not only for the Web program or Link program, but we make good use of those leaders all the time. We heard from parents at Coffee with a Principal. They were saying how important Web and the Web orientation was to help their child feel more comfortable. And we heard about a Web leader serving as a bystander when it looked like a young Web student was perhaps being picked on or bullied. That student went up to make sure that everything was okay and it just happened to be that they were doing some sort of video. So, parents were thrilled to have those bystanders automatically available. And then, a parent said, "I'm thrilled about the increased confidence that she saw in her son since he's been given this opportunity." So, pretty neat stuff. Cheryl?
I'd like the slide about the superheroes because many of our kids, when they did their costumes, we had 100 leaders and 350 freshmen walking the halls in August in full costumes, just celebrating Thomas and celebrating being leaders and the freshmen being welcomed. Jeremy shared a lot of what I was going to talk about with regards to the Link and how the program worked. So, thank you.
No problem, Cheryl.
I'm going to be able to tell you a little bit about what I'm so excited about with our leaders is that they are, this program is 100% student-driven and they encourage us to take, be hands-off and put the ball in the kids' court and let them run with it. And it has been so enlightening to see these kids organize T-shirt drives for our student with cancer, organize our social follow-ups, our academic follow-ups. Both schools did kickball under the lights and at Thomas, we lit off the skylanterns at the end of it and it was a very powerful opportunity for the kids. This month, we're going to be decorating gingerbread men, the Link leaders and the freshmen, and then selling the cookies as a fundraiser for upcoming activities. Our kids are going to have a semi-formal in the spring to thank the leaders. Remember semi-formals back in the olden days and you got to go? Oh, that was so much fun. The kids were like, "Semiformal? What's that?" So, we're going to bring the semi-formal back and thank our leaders for their time. I would like to say thank you to the board and especially to Adele for three years ago, believing in this program. When we got to Connecticut...
Yes.
And we walked in in the masses and I was doing the math. I think we were 16 adults from the district. They were, the organization, which is nationwide, which has been going on for many years...
International.
Has never seen a district be this committed to teachers and administrators. They were in awe of how committed we were to this program. So, as we go to our regional follow-up, which we held last month, many of the schools in the surrounding areas are envious of the administrative support we have as well as the district support we have. So, thank you to all of you for believing in this program because your support allows us to support the kids. So, I think I totally blew through all of my things that I needed to say, but thank you to you for believing in this program so that we can believe in our kids.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the after orientation day. I have to tell you, in my mind, this is probably one of the most important days in any high school students of the four years of their career at Thomas or at Schrader. And I know that that's probably the case at the junior high as well with Web because this is the day that really starts it all and this is the day that they really have a lot of anxiety about. And we start that day as a pep rally where basically that's the feel that you would think, that's what you would think of as you entered our gymnasium on that day. Students are greeted, music is playing loudly, people are cheering, and it's a different feel for students and they're automatically coming in feeling welcomed. And it changes the culture of your building when you do something like this. Freshmen and sixth graders see that this is how junior high is. This is how high school is. And we start off on the right note right from the beginning. And that's why we think that this is such an important day because we're starting off from the beginning, reducing anxiety and creating a positive culture in our school district of what we expect and how we expect upperclassmen to interact with underclassmen. So, it's really one of those things where we throw the kids in and they start participating right away and we make Link cool. We make Web cool. And freshmen really are engaged. They enjoy it. They see the upperclassmen excited about it and they want to be part of it. And it's something that I know, I can speak for everyone sitting here, something that we are very proud of, that we get to do this with kids. And that's, this is one of the coolest parts of my job and it's just really incredible to be able to interact with kids that way. And just to sit back and watch kids interact with each other. There are times that Cheryl and I will just take a step back and say nothing and watch and you would be in awe of what kids do for each other under the right circumstances. And that carries with them through all four years of high school and it's pretty incredible. If you ask upperclassmen who their Link leaders were, they don't forget and that's really powerful. And it's something that we really enjoy being part of. And as Cheryl said, we really appreciate the support that you all have given for this program because it is invaluable to this district and the culture of our students and the positive atmosphere that we have at Thomas and Schrader and Willink and Spry. And we're proud to say that we teach here because of that.
Do you want to introduce Peyton and...
I think Sterpy's next. Are you next? Ladies first.
He learned that in Link.
Peyton here is one of my students. I have Peyton for U.S. History. I also have her for the Leadership Course that is attached to the Link Crew and it's attached to the Boomerang Project and the curriculum that comes out of that. It's kind of my daily. I enjoy every second of teaching it and I'm very fortunate to have Peyton in my class. And then you're going to hear from Andrew who is at Schrader. Go for it, Peyton.
Well, like, you know, I'm a junior at Thomas and I was the first group as freshmen to go through the Link program. When I was in ninth grade, I was very excited to be the first group. I felt like I was the new beginning of Thomas. But like any freshman, I was very nervous going to high school. But freshman orientation sort of smoothed things out in the beginning. I started to feel more comfortable. And then, when I, the first day of school, I thought it was the coolest thing. I was hanging out with my Link leader. My sister was a Link leader. She's now in college and she was the first group to be Link leaders. And I had so many feelings. I was excited, nervous. And I remember looking across the room and it was like my first study hall. I saw my Link leader and she wanted me to sit next to her. And looking back on that day, it sort of made me the Link leader that I am because I always say hi to my kids in the hall and they'll say hi back. And like sometimes they'll, I'll catch them off-guard and they'll be like, "Wow, you're saying hi to me." And I'll be like, "Yeah." So, to me, it has changed since I've started in 2011 at Thomas. We're not just Titans, but we are a Titan family now. To me, Thomas students have become united and even the staff have. I grew as a person so much. I attended the Link conference on November 6th and I will never forget that day. I was interviewed for Channel A News and I was very caught off-guard because in the midst of that, I was running around the gym acting like an airplane. And I got pulled off and I was like, "Okay." And she asked me why I decided to do this and I said that we aren't, we're kids. We are not professionals. So, having an experience like this sort of sets the stage for us when we leave high school and go to college and spread the experience that we've had with Link. And I feel like we need to be able to show our leadership that we can do have.
Thank you.
All right. I feel like Link, being a freshman and going into orientation day, I really didn't know what to expect. I was really nervous because, you know, I didn't really know anybody and I didn't really know what to expect. And it's just going in there, there's loud music. You just instantly feel comfortable and it's just like, "Wow, this is going to be a fun day." And it's just, the whole orientation day itself, it just, it made me, on the first day of school, it just made me want to go to school and be comfortable. It's just, I wanted to almost just wear sweatpants and a hoodie because I felt like I already knew everybody there. It just, it made me feel, again, more comfortable and, you know, I knew going in there that I had more friends than I would ever thought I had. Even kids in my grade I became friends with because of our groups we were in and the Link leaders. It was awesome to know older people and, because then they show you the tricks of the trade of the building and it's just, it's awesome. And then, being a Link leader now, it's awesome. I love seeing a smile on kids' faces, just being helpful to them and just giving them the little tricks that you were always nervous about walking into the school on the first day. It's just, you ease that anxiety over for them. It's very nice. And then, I think that Link, the program Link for our school, it provides a better sense of unity because the younger kids aren't really frightened by the older kids because they realize that we're just, we're like them. We're just fun-loving people and we just want to see everybody smile and we want to just be a big family. So, I think Link is an awesome program.
Thank you. We have just another testimonial, this from a high school parent. She said that Link has been the best experience of her son's high school career and she's witnessed significant growth since he's become involved. He reaches out to members of his Link Crew on a regular basis, especially to one young person that struggles quite a bit. He checks in with this crew member, finds him for lunch, texts him to be sure he's making it to class on time, et cetera. This young man has become the go-to Link student for adults in the school and she said that she can't say enough about the program. So, another wonderful Some of the data that we were able to collect, we reviewed behavior data from the year prior to starting Web and Link compared to the 12-13 school year and we see a significant decrease in behavior referrals for our incoming students. Again, Web and Link are just one facet of the work that we've done to impact climate and culture. And we're going to continue to seek meaningful information and data that will continue to drive our efforts. And again, we're celebrating our regional conference and looking forward to the next one. Go ahead, Peyton. And do you have any questions?
First of all, thank you. That was tremendous. Students, thank you for your reflections on being first involved at sixth grade or high school and then your involvement now and I appreciate the work you're doing for those students. Continue the effort, please. Thank you. No other questions.
Some comments. I've had experience as a parent. I've got two kids that have either been involved in the Web program or the Link program on both ends and it was really comforting to have our oldest daughter come home and talk about Mrs. Navarro because it was, it was a connection that we had at least in our house and that means something, especially when they say it in front of your parents. John, you did make a comment. I'm sure you didn't mean it, but it was something like when you introduced yourself and you said, "I'm just a Web leader" or, I can't remember the term that you used. And my comment to that is don't underestimate the power that the student leaders have. The younger kids may not tell you, you may not recognize it, but the older you get, the more, all of you, all of you as student leaders are going to realize that. It's a wonderful opportunity for you and I just hope that you experience everything that you can and just gain from it and move forward with your, with your lives and do, continue to do wonderful things.
Great report. I have a fifth grader that's going to be a sixth grader next year. We've been having these conversations already. He's a little nervous going into Spry and I didn't know about this honestly until tonight and this is absolutely fantastic. And all you guys, great job for doing it. Students, awesome. It's nice to see that you continue it after the first day. These kids have somebody to look towards that are close to their age that they feel that they can look up to. That's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Proud you should be of the work that you do. I think Peyton, you talked about it, that just saying hello to somebody, the, the power that that has in just making someone feel comfortable and welcome and that you took that two seconds, recognizing the power of that is incredible. And the fact that that's inherent in this program because you didn't all say it, but it was evident in your descriptions of other things, that your connection with, with an individual on a one-on-one basis can make all the difference in the world for someone. Keep up the good work.
I'd just like to say ditto of what all the other board members said and just that it sounds like a lot of fun. Wish they had that when we were kids.
I did want to add my thanks to all of the people that are here today because I know in the back you have the Floor Leader, Mr. Jugovic Sanderson. And I've watched all these Floor Leaders, Mrs. Navara, Mr. McBride, and you would not believe who they are on the floor when they have to do this, but you don't recognize them because they are so over-the-top enthusiastic and they're leading hundreds of students. And especially at middle school, I always say, "If we could bottle and sell the energy that middle school students bring, we'd all be rich" because there's so much energy in that gymnasium. It's very hard to hear a lot of times, but it is one of the highest impact programs that I think we have been able to create to support our kids. And it really did come from the board's direction with that climate and culture goal. What can we do so kids feel more comfortable in those transitions because they are very scary. From what you know, that fifth grade that you've been in for six years from kindergarten and now you've got to go to a school with students from two other buildings. And am I going to know somebody? Am I going to be comfortable? And the same thing, now you're going into a bigger high school when you go from that eighth grade to ninth grade. So, we're so pleased that we have the commitment here that has made this happen. And it really has been a partnership between the administration believing that this is a good program, but the teachers are the ones that have made it work with. And the leadership of the students is just such a beautiful thing to watch. It's getting better and better every year we see it. So, thank you, teachers, so much and thank you, students, for stepping forward and saying, "I'm willing to be a leader." That's priceless.
Final testimony. And I think Adele knows what I'm going to be talking about right now. As the superintendent of schools or as the president of the Board of Education, we hear every criticism about every single program that's in existence in Webster. In the three years, I have not heard a single criticism, nothing but praise for this program. It's incredible. Just totally and completely incredible. So, that is, in my mind, very strong testimony for the program. Great report, by the way. Board members, this does require action. May we have a motion to accept this terrific linked report? Thank you. Second, thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Before you leave, students, we do have some recognition awards, particularly for outstanding achievement in the Link Conference and Web Conference for you students. Yes, please do invite us to your next...
Absolutely.
I don't know what we call it, conference. We can get crazy.
We're having a pajama party next Thursday night.
Want to come join us? Right here.
Right here.
Can I wear my Superman costume?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Great report.
Thank you.
Adele, why don't you tell us what you have to report tonight?
So, as we enter this festive holiday season, I'd like to make the community aware of the fact that our talented student musicians will be featured throughout the months of December and January on WETV Channel 15, our district's television station. Throughout this holiday season, we'll be broadcasting some of our talented student musicians' concerts live, as we did last night's with Webster Schrader's winter concert, and we'll also be showing tape concerts. So, we want you to see where you can see the schedule for this. You can check the schedule for Channel 15 by visiting our website, websterschools.org and we have a video shot of that on the screen. Click on the Communication tab... Click on the communication tab at the top of the homepage and you'll see Channel fifteen's broadcast schedule on the drop-down menu. This is a great way to get into the holiday spirit, especially if you weren't able to attend a concert, yet you still want to enjoy the musical gifts of Webster students. And, um, we did have our Senior Citizens Day, uh, last week, right before the Thanksgiving holiday and we had our student musicians performing for our seniors. And it was just so delightful to look out on the crowd and see the seniors so engaged with the student musicians. They were kind of chair dancing as the kids were singing because there were some very familiar songs. They were singing along with the student choirs and it was a real wonderful thing, so I strongly encourage our community, go check a concert, that concert schedule and watch one of these concerts, you're going to be amazed at the talent of our students. So speaking of gifts, I wanted to recognize all third graders from Plank South and their teachers. Stephanie Dickey, Lisa Harrison-Linhardt, and Ann Greenberg, this group of students and teachers recently completed Christmas tree decorations for U.S. troops serving in Afghanistan. These third grade graders read a book set in Afghanistan which helped them make a personal connection with this project and what they are reading. This is just one of the examples going on in classrooms throughout the holiday season, teaching students about giving generously while also learning about the world outside of their schools and outside of Webster. I want to congratulate all of our student athletes on successful force, fall sports seasons. Teams from Spry, Willink, Webster Schrader, and Webster Thomas recently wrapped up a season of competition. And while many of these teams celebrated success on the field, what we want to talk about tonight is they are also quite accomplished in the classroom. All of our four teams, all of them, at Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas were designated as Scholar-Athletes, which means that the team had a cumulative grade point average of ninety or better during the fall season of competition. So our students are working hard, um, on the field and they're also working hard in the classrooms. We look forward to another great season of winter sports, already off and running as you heard from our student liaisons this evening. And finally, if you have always wanted to learn more about the district budgeting process, I want to make the community aware of an opportunity to volunteer as a member of the Budget Advisory Committee. We call it BAC, B A C, for the twenty fourteen fiscal year, twenty fourteen fifteen. So we're going to start building the budget and we want community input. This important advisory committee will assist the district by providing myself and the board with its perspective on school budget development, the budget process, and budget communications. So the good thing about this commitment is it's five meetings, five and out. We'll meet five times between January and April and we have the dates up here. In January, February, two in March, and one meeting in April. You will learn, um, a great deal about public school budgeting and you will have, you will see how the budget gets put together, have plenty of time to comment and give input, um, get your questions answered, so I, I strongly encourage participation in this important committee. Interested residents should email Cindy Cushman or call two one six zero zero one, or email Lisa Marino, or call her at two one six zero zero one seven. This is a spotlight story on our website, so if, um, you're hearing this and you just want to go on the web, it gives you information of how you can get involved and we hope that you do. And finally, this is our last meeting before the holiday break and as we heard our student describe, this is the first two-week break that he has had since kindergarten. I think many of the adults in the room would say this is the first two-week break and we can remember. So we do, um, want to go into this holiday with grateful hearts for many of the things we've experienced as a community, many of the things we've experienced in our schools, the fact that we are a family and that we, we are together in good times and bad. Uh, we are not a perfect district, we are not a perfect family, but we, we hang together and we work together and we talk things out and we make things better. And I'm so grateful for all that we have experienced as a family this, this last year and just grateful to be going into another year um, in this community, so I want to give my heartfelt wishes for a joyous holiday season for all families in Webster. And please, um, do check our website, we will be giving information. Um, there will be some memorial celebrations for, um, the events that we experienced as a community last Christmas Eve. Um, they will be on December twenty-second and December twenty-fourth. There'll be some busing provided for, um, a vigil to be held on December twenty-fourth and we have volunteers that will be coordinating that and if you're interested in participating in that vigil, we'll have some, um, information for you.
Thank you, Adele. Just out of curiosity, Mike, are you on our Budget Advisory Committee or is it? And Fritz? Okay, just wanted to make sure. I wanted to make sure you noticed those dates. Thank you. Um, the Webster School Board believes that a strong public school is important because an educated populace is essential for the nation to thrive. And we believe that education is the foundation for success in our modern world. Now, there's been a lot of fallout with the State Education Department or the Region's Reform Agenda. That reform agenda consists of three parts. It consists of the A P P R, which is the evaluation that's used to look at our teachers and our principals. It also consists of the student data collection, which is known as INBLOOM, and the third part is actually referred to as the Common Core or the standards that we use in the classroom. Now, the issues around this education reform agenda are many. Are the standards too hard? Are we setting up students for failure? Will teachers get the support that they need to truly change their teaching? Is it fair to base teacher evaluation on student test scores when teachers are just beginning to adjust to the Common Core? These are all questions we are hearing. Now, debating whether we should demand that the state dump the Common Core standards, it just doesn't make sense to me. But a discussion on how to bring these learning guidelines alive in the classroom is very appropriate for this board. So I'm wondering, Mike, would, do you have any thoughts about the Region's Reform Agenda?
You know, we, the Board of Education, we've wanted to let the parents, teachers, and students know of Webster that we've heard the concerns and, uh, that was brought forward to us. And these concerns have come in the way of emails, um, phone calls, a recent public forum, survey. And, uh, we're, we're now in the process of reviewing these concerns and we putting together an appropriate action to the concerns. Tonight you'll be hearing from the different members of the Board of Education about the various concerns uh, that we have with the Common Core studies going forward. So that's my opening remark.
Fritz, you want to add any insight?
Yep. Testing, quizzing, assessment, these words and practices have been part of education for many, many years. It's how we measure student performance. It's how our students get feedback as to whether they are learning, internalizing, grasping and mastering the curriculum that they are taught. It gives the instructor feedback so that he, she can monitor and adjust future lessons. Over time, certain tests, assessments, and their scores have been referred to high-stakes testing. Certain scores are posted in the newspaper, put on websites, with school districts being ranked throughout the county, state, nation, and world. There are certain tests, assessments that do not take up a great deal of time. There's others that take up multiple days for multiple grades. Over time, certain testing procedures have been put in a place that do the following. Number one, there's some that alter the school day or multiple school days for a certain grade, several grades, or an entire building. Number two, some result in a cost increase for administering, scoring the test properly. And number three, they take away from learning and possibly slow down the art creativity of teaching. So with anything, there needs to be a balance. With any change, there is discomfort. And right now, we're going down a path that we're not used to going down. We identify items that need to be fixed, but we don't have the means to fix all of them ourselves. And because our children are at stake, it strikes at our core of who we are. Now more than ever, we need to work with our local boards to advocate for an improved balance with the how, what, why, where, and when with regards to testing and assessment.
Thank you, Fritz. Janine, any insights?
Thanks, Mike. Um, it's often said that the devil is in the details, which may well be an understatement when talking about the implementation of the state's Common Core initiative. While the standards at the foundation of the Common Core have been defined and most will agree that they reflect what we need our children to be capable of to be successful twenty-first century systems, citizens, there's been concern raised over the implementation of many aspects of the Common Core. To realize the objectives at the heart of the Common Core, it's essential that the state have all the resources necessary to implement the Common Core available to the districts so that they may be incorporated into the instructional program with integrity. The modules that provide the framework for daily instruction and the revised assessments that will be used to evaluate progress towards reaching the Common Core learning standards must be available well in advance of their expected implementation. Providing these to teachers prior, one year prior to their implementation will allow teachers to map these resources against currently utilized instructional materials and modify the modules to reflect teachers' knowledge of their students. We strongly encourage the state to evaluate the pace at which the Core is being implemented and provide districts with the time necessary to assimilate these changes and assure student success.
Thank you, Janine. Sue, I know INBLOOM is always on your mind.
Yes, um, INBLOOM, which is part of the Region's Reform Agenda, is a student database that will be stored in the cloud and there's a lot of controversy and misinformation about INBLOOM. Every day, new opinions appear in the newspapers. The latest issue of On Board, which is the New York State School Board Association newspaper, a source that we all trust around the table, um, has a good article, uh, with commonly asked questions and answers, so tonight my comments will be a summary of this article. Currently, we have, we have and send a lot, we have and send a large, large amount of student information to the state. Many school districts, including Webster, have a third-party vendor to provide the necessary software and hardware to manage this information. And we use this information to inform instruction, to plan staff development, to set goals, and to measure progress towards these goals. There are many major, there are, there are three major concerns with INBLOOM at this time that people are upset about. Um, one is the security of the information. One is the fear that, or two is the fear that student information will be sold to vendors and the third one is basically a question. Why is New York, why are New York and Illinois the only states that are participating in this, in, in Bloom at this time? In addressing the security of the information, we can compare it to the security of online banking information and computerized health, healthcare records. Although the idea of student information being stored in the cloud sounds scary, our students' information will be just as secure as our personal banking and health records. All of our students' information is and will continue to be protected by FERPA, which is the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act. As a district, we will be reviewing our computer security-related policies to make sure that any unattended computers, simple passwords, uh, printed information, um, won't contribute to student information to be shared unintentionally. Concerning the fear that our student information will be sold to vendors, INBLOOM will not be able to use, sell, or give the information to anyone or any company. Our school district in New York State retain ownership of the information and will dictate how it will be used. At this time, we don't know why New York State and Illinois are the only states that participate in INBLOOM, we can only speculate that they are because of the reasons I mentioned. Over the last few days, my reservations about this initiative have decreased. Having said that, today there was a New York State Pulse poll with sixty-six percent of school board members opposing the state supplying data to INBLOOM and seventy-four percent of the respondents believe parents should be able to opt out of INBLOOM. So obviously, we still do have some reservations. So I'd like to say we are not a hundred percent comfortable with INBLOOM and we do have reservations with INBLOOM, but we understand the intended purposes and will comply cautiously with the law and continue conversations with S E D about our concerns and with suggestions.
Thank you, Sue. As I stated before, the issues around the Region's Reform Agenda are many, but the standards themselves shouldn't be the target. Many believe that these standards do offer a better opportunity for students to become higher achievers. Now, the standards are really nothing more than an outline of what students should know and be able to do at a particular grade level in order to be on track for success after high school. The standards ask teachers to emphasize critical thinking and analytical reasoning over rote learning, to stress writing rather than filling in bubbles or multiple-choice answers, and to learn how to learn, not just memorize. When the standards were introduced four years ago, there was talk about the shifts in the way the subjects would be taught. It sounded strange then and, and, and people seem to be struggling, struggling with it still now, but it doesn't have to be. We just need to take a breath and wrap our heads around what we are trying to do in Webster. What are we trying to do? We want to improve our high school graduation. We wish that the need for post-high school remediation be reduced. We want our students to be able to apply the skills necessary to compete successfully in a global economy. And most importantly, in my mind, we want instruction in the classroom that encourages a love and appreciation for lifelong learning that enriches all aspects of life. How can we not support these goals? Tom, um, I'm going to give you an honor because you're the president of the New York State School Board Association and I'm, I'll defer the last words of the board for you.
Mike, thanks, I, I do appreciate that. You know, during the, the seven years I've been on the New York State School Boards Association and the last two as, as the president, I've had the opportunity to have several meetings, um, over a dozen uh, with the commissioner, some of them were actually facilitating discussions we had at conventions over a couple of years, things of that nature. And in the last two years as president, it was nine, nine roundtables, our, our own suitcase, she participated in one. It, uh, each time was twenty-five school board members from around the state, so the concerns we were hearing that we've heard in this district that we've heard, uh, in the forum, that we've heard by any means possible, whether it was a phone call, as Mike mentioned, an email, uh, anything like that, uh, they were echoed consistently across the state. This, it's, it's a universal concern. But I can agree with, with Mike Suffollette that the, the Common Core state standards, they are good. It's, it's a higher achievement, it's a higher achievement level we like the students to reach. Are there problems? Yes. The commissioners admitted it, things were rushed. Things were not as planned out or communicated as they should have been and he, has said it, he said it in public. He said it at the most recent New York State School Board Convention. But he, he can't disagree and I don't think anybody at this table really disagrees with the destination. And there's one thing about having these Common Core standards being adopted by, I think, well over forty states at this point, is there's something that this nation has become, I've noticed it because I had to do with my own family, is you have to be mobile. You have to move from state to state. By having some of these Common Core standards in place, you have the opportunity of moving your family somewhere and knowing that you're going to be pretty much moving into something that you can assimilate into and transition to a little bit better, so this is a plus for the students going forward in addition to the standards being a little bit more rigorous. So that's very positive. There was one big concern that I've heard all over the place and that is if, depending on the district it was speaking, um, or the, the teacher you happen to talk to, it says, you know, we have to teach right to the module. And one time in talking to the commissioner, I says, you know, you've got it, instruct, you have to tell this a different way. And one of them that I used, and he actually repeated probably two meetings ago, is he tried to paraphrase my story, did a pretty good job. It's like a recipe for a cake. And the cake calls for so many cups of bilzeberry flour, but you're a gold medal flower user. You substitute the gold medal flower and you still get to the cake. You reached the destination, you got to that standard you needed to achieve. You input your own flavor on the subject matter, but you still help the student reach the success level you hope them to reach. And it puts some of the board members at ease because to hear them say that directly, let them go back to their districts and say, you know, we're saying you have to follow these verbatim and you don't. And he's trying to, uh, with the help of the regions and input from the superintendents to look for waivers on certain tests and things of that nature to cut back on some of the tests. So are the Common Core standards good? In my heart of hearts, yes, I feel that they are. I ask that we give it a chance. The transition's been tough because the transmission is like trying to drink from a fire hose, it is tough. But it needs some time and I think, uh, if we are vigilant and we also are vigilant in bringing up things that need to be corrected in a way that people can assimilate into the next year's activity, I think we're going to be in a good place as a state. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Adele, how can you deliver the message you've heard tonight to some of the State Education Department people?
I would be very happy to take these messages to Albany as I go and, um, work with other I would be very happy to take these messages to Albany as I go and work with other superintendents. Tom has a platform with the commissioner as a school board member, and I have a platform with the commissioner as a part of the New York State Superintendent's Council, so it's kind of nice because, you know, we both can send these messages from Webster. And last meeting, I spoke about the work that we had done in Webster to reduce testing because we had heard from our parents last spring, our teachers, our students, that the testing that we had infused into our instructional day because of the teacher evaluation system was too much, and, and students were just taking too many tests, and it wasn't getting us to the point that we wanted to be at. So I spoke about how we changed that. I thanked Mr. Gomina for his part in that because it really was a team effort, and our Webster Teacher Association, we all worked together, we all had the same purpose, that we said we, we have to reduce testing in Webster. So we were able to reduce a great deal of, of, all of our pre-imposed tests that were tied to teacher evaluation, but keep the tests that we use formatively for instruction and then comply with the New York State testing regimen. From the superintendent's lens, I am taking that message of, of less testing to Albany, and we have recently seen the State Education Department reduce the times of the 3-8 test. So they're, they're reducing some of the timeframes, so they're not so long for our kids to sit for those 3-8 tests, which I think is a step in the right direction. The other thing that they're doing with testing, and I know this is a concern of the Western community, is for special education students, because we've heard this loud and clear, that we're worried about our special ed, education students, and especially as it comes to their ability to challenge these state tests. So with this waiver process that Tom was talking about, we are submitting an application, and this is kind of tied up with federal regulations, it's not just state regulations, but we're pushing at the federal regulations so that our special ed, education students, we have, we have to realize that some are very complicated students, and if they're very complicated students, they take an alternative assessment. That is available now. But then there's a group of students who are, they're in our classrooms, but they're not ready to challenge the state test, even with test modifications, it's just too difficult for them. And we found that those, that group of students struggled last year with the new assessments. So we're advocating for that next group of students to be able to be tested at their instructional level, not their chronological level. So, and we've heard this from teachers, many teachers saying, well, if I'm teaching fifth grade and I have a student in my special ed classroom that's reading at a second-grade level, how are they going to be tested at fifth-grade level? That's what we're talking about, it's that group of students. With clear parameters and clear guidelines, we're advocating that we can gain some movement and some flexibility in that, in that regard. So that's one of the, the messages that I'm taking from Webster and the work that we're I do know that, as Janine spoke, that the, the State Education Department has realized that they rushed the resources, like, they gave them out too late. They said, you have to, you have to teach this, this year, and, starting in September, and sometimes we didn't get the resources till almost, you know, four weeks before teachers had to teach them, or it was just, they were coming out pretty late, or, or not at all, we were expecting them to come out and they were late, as Tom said. So those are some of the mistakes that have been made, and we have been very vocal about that. So we have seen now that new Common Core teaching for next year, for example, high school geometry, the modules are starting to come out now for next year. So our teachers will have time to look at them, to process them, to do summer work with them before they have to teach them in September. That is good, and that has to, that has to sustain itself, because our teachers are too stressed and work too hard to have to take something, you know, right before they have to teach it and implement it. They just need time to think and teach, think and process and customize that work for Webster. So we see some changes being made, there are more changes to be made, and I will happily take these messages to Albany in the capacity that I have.
Thank you, Adele. We'll move on. Jim, we have some tax surceary proceedings to deal with tonight.
Yes, tonight, the board has a tax surceary proceeding for Gannett Satellite Information Property. There was a two-year assessment reduction that was requested. The settlement on this is leaving the prior year's assessment at what it currently is and reducing the current year's assessment by $86,000, which would result in a payback of refund by the district of just over $2,000. This was settled by both the town and the school attorneys, and I recommend approval of this resolution.
Any questions from the board? Motion to accept the resolution?
Sir, move.
Sue second you?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Before we go on to school liaison reports, we do have to turn our attention to filling the vacancy of Janine, and I would just like to alert the public that we will be requesting any member of the community who's 18 years of age or older, who is a resident of the school district, to send a letter of interest slash resume to Cindy Cushman, our board clerk, by Thursday, December 19th, and you work till, it's five o'clock, are you still here? By five o'clock. And from these candidates, the board will then select an individual to fill out the final six months of Janine's term. And hopefully, if people forget, we'll have a, a news announcement on that that they can check, and it'll be on our website, hopefully, and they can check that. All right. I also, I just want to read a letter that I received from a Joe and Marge Reber. It was addressed to the board, and he just wanted to say that, "My wife and I wish to thank everyone affiliated with yesterday's 42nd Annual Senior Citizens Day and offer a great big thank you. The musical program consisting of the Thomas Orchestra, the Thomas Wind Ensemble, the Schrader Jazz Ensemble, the wonderful Schrader Select Vocal Ensemble were very easy for our listening pleasure, and every student appeared well-disciplined and talented. When it came to dinner, we were totally surprised to learn that all the food was prepared by the cooks in the school kitchen and not a catered affair. It was a good selection and the closest we've had to home cooking. Thank you again for inviting us. It's people and the students like you that keep our town motto alive. Webster, where life is worth living. Sincerely, Joe and Marge Reber." So I thought that was a very lovely, lovely letter to receive. All right, we'll move on to our school liaison reports. We'll start with, actually, we're going to end with Janine because she's the last one. Mike, not anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Fritz?
Yep. At DeWitt Road, we have a PTSA Family Night, that's this Friday, December 7th, and that starts at 6:30. Next Wednesday, December 11th, is the DeWitt Winter Concert, and that starts at 7:00. And currently, they have a Hat and Mitten Drive that started on December 2nd, and it continues through December 16th.
Thank you. Tom, anything? Okay. Sue?
At Schlegel Road, they have a holiday celebration next Tuesday, December 10th, and their winter concert is December 19th.
Very good. Plank South, they're going to have their Second Annual Boys Night on Friday, December 13th, coming up at the gym. Grades K through 2 will be from 6:30 to 7:15, and then grades 3 through 5 will be from 7:30 to 8:15. And also be aware that their winter concert is Monday, December 16th at 7:00 PM. Janine, anything?
I guess one of the things that really hit home to me was that, over the last two years, I haven't been able to be at Clem North. And that's really what made it apparent that I wasn't doing the job.
Yeah, okay.
That I believed this district deserves. So my apologies to those at Clem North for those two years that I've missed, but I also, I also want to thank all the folks who set such wonderful examples over the 12 years that I've been on the board, Tom and Sue, who were here when I came on the board, Mike for your leadership, the countless other board members that I had the pleasure to serve with, including Eric Reed, Sue Jones, Kathy Smith, Lisa Smith, Laura Harder, Chris, John, the vast array of administrators who have had the pleasure to work with. And I also want to recognize that I probably wouldn't be here had I not had the privilege of working with an incredible, incredible group of people in PTSA, because that was an organization that really had such a wonderful partnership with the district and fostered that relationship in such a positive way that moving from a PTSA role to a board role was not seamless, because moving to a board role is an incredible learning experience. But at least having the opportunity to have worked with such incredible people in PTSA at least provided some glimmer and insight into the work that the board does. I'm proud of the fact that this is a board that does the right things, that has students at its focus, who always is advocating at both the state and national level for what's right for kids, a board that continues its own professional development and has a commitment to continuous improvement. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Janine. You know, in Webster, we strive to make our school buildings a healthy, safe, and secure physical environment for learning. And in the past few weeks, the board has been taking tours of our buildings and facilities. And we recently met with our architect and manager of our buildings and grounds to review a summary of the projects that have been completed by our buildings and ground staff over the last few years. In addition, we reviewed a summary of the conditions of all of our buildings, paying special attention to the areas that are in the most immediate need and probably should be considered in any future capital projects that are proposed. The goal of these projects will be to protect the integrity and the infrastructure of our buildings, and they include such things as rost and structured wall reconstruction and exterior doors and abatement of the floor tiles and carpets. So with board approval, I'm going to ask that the board receive a recommendation from our superintendent about what actions can be taken to upkeep our buildings. And I'm also going to go around and, and ask if any of the board members want to specifically mention something that they saw on their building tour. Fritz, do you?
You know, I, I did visit DeWitt. I had a great tour with Deb Reed and Blaine Cunningham, and there's, there's no doubt in my mind that our staff does a phenomenal job keeping it safe, keeping it clean, keeping the upkeep, but we, we are at a point where we, we are going to have to make some repairs. And, you know, that, that's going to come at a cost, so I do want people who are watching on TV to know that you have to spend money in order to save money in the long run. And it's, to me, when I was going through the building and hearing what's going on at the other buildings, it's just a natural progression. We, we do have several buildings that are very, very old, and the upkeep is needed, and, but again, I do want to compliment Blaine and, and his crew for, for doing the work that they do on a daily basis.
Thank you. Tommy, any?
Yes, I had a tour of State Road with the Principal Ably, and similar type, noted similar type activities that are required there, some tuck pointing and some mental work and things of that nature, some tile work, things, there are things that you need to do preventive maintenance. It's just something that's important. I, I commend our community in the past who gave our board permission to set up a reserve to, for these types of projects going forward. So keeping that in mind, yes, we have to spend some money, and we, Jim and others will review our, our rate after what's needed and what we get back from the state, but we hope to go forward and make sure that for our students and our staff and that the buildings are, are safe and adequate for the education we hope our children to receive.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to tour Thomas High School and Clem North, and in both cases, the buildings look incredible, but there are those issues, particularly, you know, in some of the places where brick needs to be repointed and such. I guess with respect to going forward with additional work, we need to be mindful of the fact that we could do many things within our, the scope of our operating budget, but the fiscally prudent way to approach this would be to capture as much within a capital project that is appropriate so that we do receive the higher rate, to receive state aid on it, and then couple that with our capital reserve to the, and then reduce to the extent possible the impact on the local taxpayer. So moving forward, looking at what the balance point is on these projects is an important task, and good luck with it.
Sue?
I had the opportunity, opportunity to tour Schlegel and Willink, and Willink, being a relatively new building, really didn't need a lot of work, so, you know, there's not going to be a lot happening there. Schlegel, how old is Schlegel now, Jim? I don't remember what they said.
Seventy, about 70, 71.
Was built in 71, yeah. So it's forty-plus years old.
Yeah, remember, we didn't use it for a few years, but it is.
Right. It's forty years old. So anyway, I think at Schlegel, the things that we noticed were the pointing as well as the roof were the, were the major things. But I just have to say, you go in there, and the principals just showed so much pride in their buildings, Blaine certainly showed pride, and you can just tell the, the people who maintain the buildings and who clean the buildings really, you know, they care about their job, and, and they do a great job, and it, it shows, and so it's really nice. So thank you.
Well, I guess they gave the tour of the oldest building to the oldest board member. No, I had the opportunity to see both Spry, Schrader, and Plank North, and, did you, Sue, did you get a chance to look at that aerial view? I think it's an aerial view of the roof.
Yes, with the heat sensors.
Yep, the heat sensors. I am concerned about the number of spots I saw on the Schrader roof. I'm surprised there's not leaks coming through right now. We don't want a leaking, leaking building. And again, Blaine Cunningham, congratulations, it was a great tour, and the job you and your staff are doing is, is outstanding. But I do think, board, we should ask for a recommendation from the superintendent and/or Jim as to what our future moves should be in regard to our buildings, the upkeep of our buildings. So can we have a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, a second. Thank you, all in favor? Okay, motion carries.
I think it was well-received by the village principals, and Blaine really enjoyed going out with you and, and giving you that tour so that you can really see what, what kind of things we're talking about, but I think, as Mike said, there was three main areas, but as you know, we've talked a number of times about roofs, and just so that people can understand, we're not talking about roofs that are 10 years old, we're talking about roofs that are 20 to 25 years old. The expected life of roofs is in that 20-year range. We have maintained them, and we have kept them up, they have lasted us longer than you would normally see. So the, the roofs we're talking about are 20-plus years old, and they are ready to be retired and replaced, because if you don't, as Mike said, you'll start seeing the cracks in that black roof, you'll start seeing the leaking, and that's what we don't want, because that only causes inside damage as well as the outside damage. So we'll be happy to bring something back to the board, and timeline, Mike, I don't, I didn't hear the timeline, but the next board meeting, which would be January?
Can it be done by then?
I believe so. I believe, I believe, you know, we've, we've had preliminary conversation, and you've heard from the architect and from myself and Blaine, and, and I think we should very, very easily be able to take that back. And just to go back to Tom's point, we did establish a reserve, and like the last project we did, we would look at this project being funded by state aid, building aid, and the balance being funded out of the reserve, so that we'd be looking for a project that had no impact on the taxpayers, which I think is very important.
Thank you. And also for that clarification on the timeline, thank you very much. We'll move on to our Monroe County School Boards Association. Sue, do you have anything from steering?
Meeting, January 15th.
Thank you. Tom or Sue, you want to do legislative?
Yeah, I was at legislative yesterday. The head, the meeting, we reviewed some of the issues that we have our upcoming trip. We'll have five representatives from Webster going down Albany on Monday, so that'll be very good. One of the things that we were informed of, and you may have heard about it in the paper, is tax cuts. And this is going to be, well, it's going to have to be a tough discussion with our legislators, because they're going to want to give tax cuts to the general population, yet we are not even funded at the level, I think at a 2009 level right now. And so, you know, we need to be going out and asking for funds like we have in years past. So we've got to buckle up and get ready to do that in March and other times as we go forward.
Thank you, Tom. There were no labor or information exchange meetings in the month of December. Sue, you want to tell us about the executive meeting?
Yes, we had an executive meeting last night. Several committee updates, regular business is all going well. The communications committee is going to be working on several things that will help us do our job and help us articulate some of the issues countywide, one of them being communicating reserve information, and basically just, hopefully, will show that in Monroe County, we're in pretty good shape, reserve-wise. We'll be talking about, and helping districts define career and college readiness, helping to frame the issues around the Regents' reform agenda, which is kind of thing that we did tonight as well, and also the effects of the Affordable Care Act on school districts.
Thank you, Sue. Tom, do you have anything to report from the New York State School Boards Association?
We had our last commissioner roundtable on the 22nd of November, and took a little bit different twist, because that morning, the superintendents were meeting with the commissioner, and so I think he went around and did a couple of things, as I mentioned in my report, on Common Core, discussing the waiver and the "too much, too fast," and things of that nature. But a couple of things that I found interesting. He asked the people, after introductions and stuff, to go around the room, and if they had one thing that they wanted to change in the district, or in the education program across the state, what would it be? And a couple that came to my mind was, one, Regents. The Regents' diploma, two, and it wasn't mentioned just by one person, but a couple reiterated that same thing. It doesn't have the pull that it did 20 years ago. It's been watered down by making it universal. So now a Regents' diploma has to be accompanied by a significant badge of number of AP classes to have, the clout it needs to have when you're trying to get into colleges. And so that was, that was one point that was brought up. Another one that was brought up was, there needs to be mentorship, and not necessarily mentorship, but some sort of a, almost a, "Here's what you're going to do with your education discussion with adults from the community." And the reason being, I mean, everybody can think back to first and second grade, when you brought mom or dad in, and you said, "Here's what mom and dad does," and you've seen these commercials with that, and what they're involved with. But where you need to have that happen is middle school and high school. How am I going to use this? You think about it. The first 18 years of a child's life, they're learning. At home, they're learning, then they come here and they learn. They don't know how they're going to be using this going forward, or have any idea how they'll use it going forward. And the educators, some of them, you know, they do their education, they're excellent educators. We have a lot of them in this district. But the aspect of being able to say, "How are you going to use this?" They have some idea, but to have the actual practitioner come in and say, "Here's how I've applied what you're learning in this class here." And the superintendent, or the commissioner, took some significant notes there with the two staff members that were there around that one, because the kids need to know what they're going to be doing in the future with it, because sometimes they're just sitting there, and they don't understand it. So, and then this weekend, we're going to have our final board meeting of the year on Saturday, so that's my report.
Thank you, Tom. We probably don't have any other, right, Janine? No report? And Sue?
Policy's Tuesday night, and I hope you all got the agenda.
Yes, we did. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look at it. It includes the superintendent's recommendations for the approval of our minutes, our personnel actions, our recommendation on the Committee on Special Education, as well as our recommendations on the Committee on Preschool Special Education. May we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Before we adjourn, I wish everyone, since this is our last public meeting in December, to have a very safe and happy holidays. And just to remind the board, we will have December 18th.
Yes.
18th is a executive workshop for us, so hope everyone can make that. Can we have a motion for adjournment?
Janine should make that motion.
Oh, yes. Janine?
So moved.
Thank you. Tom, you want to second it?
Yep.
Thank you very much. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.